... of the United States of America, interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susan, could you please do a roll call?
I will.
Thank you.
Riordan.
Here.
Layton.
Here.
Walsh.
Here.
Hetmer.
Yes.
Stazinski.
Here.
Andres.
Here.
LaRose.
Here.
Thank you. All right, the agenda, if everyone could please review it for conflict of interest.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as is for Monday, April 15th.
The agenda?
Mean agenda.
Agenda, what did I say?
Second thought?
All right. Approved by Layton, support by Riordan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's approved. It does look like we have some public here. If anyone would like to do public comment, now would be your time.
Good evening. Judy Nemitz, East Bay Township resident. I'm wondering if tonight you could provide us with a little bit of an update also on the progress on Arbutus 5. I think that the fishing pier and the bridge made out of the composite or trex seems really, really well-made and is very, very nice and people are using it. So that's a really positive thing. So thank you very much for that. I do have a few questions, though, that maybe you could address. Were there any issues with the building of the septic system by the restrooms? And if so, were those rectified? The other thing is the cement walkways where the benches are placed are incredibly close to the creek, that is the overflow creek from Spider. They're about one and one-half feet from the creek and the, I would say it's the southwest corners are eroding underneath the pads. And so I'm concerned about that with the stability of that soil and then during freeze and thaw, will those break off? And why were those built and placed so close to the creek like that with the erosion? And the silk fences is pretty, kind of the sand overflowed it, so it's not holding that in any way right now. So I'd like to see if you could address that. And then the walkway to the parking lot, the elevation, I'm wondering, is that going to remain? It seems to be level with the parking lot, or is that going to be dug up? And that type of thing, because it seems a little odd. And then the erosion control, I understand that you can't do plantings because we didn't know that we were going to have such nice weather early, but it does get cold at night, so there's nothing to hold the soil. So I'm wondering why there weren't any erosion mats put down out there? Because the sediment is going into the creek and into the lake. Erosion mats are a really nice way of controlling that in addition to the silk fence. And then lastly, how are we doing on the budget? Are we in concert with the budget? Are we over, under? How are we doing with the budget out there? So I just have those concerns and I'm hoping that we can take a look at those tonight. So thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carol Kussel from East Bay Township, resident, citizen, taxpayer, voter, you know all those things. Thank you for your work as park commissioners. Together you are bringing several, in my opinion, several exciting activities to our township, especially in my opinion are the farmer's market and the community gardens. I'm glad that Ms. Nemitz addressed you first. I share some of her concerns. As park commissioners, I believe that your role is to oversee, support, and in some cases develop parks in our township and provide recreational activities for our citizens. But additionally, I believe that your role also includes protecting our parks' lands and water and providing opportunities for citizens to understand how the park lands and waters are protected. In other words, I also see your role as parks commissioners to be stewards of our parks' land and water and to encourage stewardship at the township level and at the individual citizen level. As you consider plans for part two of Arbutus Park, I see that's on your agenda tonight, please take time to go to Arbutus Park 5 and closely look at what has happened there today. I understand you have your park visit coming up, but you might want to put this a little ahead, or perhaps you've already done this. Couple things I'd like you to consider. Look at the runoff into the stream and lake from the expansive exposed grounds and consider the lake pollution that is happening as a result of the park design and the choices made. Look at the runoff from the road and grounds into the parking lot and onto the sidewalks. Look at the eroding concrete bases for park benches and beneath the restroom building. Consider why the rain garden or bioswell or impervious sidewalk bricks were not included in the plan to catch some of that runoff. Consider why straw netting wasn't put down on the open grounds during the winter and spring to avoid or to slow some of that runoff. And then as you also look at part two, look at the wet grounds under the current swingset. Is that really a place for a playground or is that more a place for a natural area to be or for a bioswell or a rain garden? Consider placing a sign as you move forward about shoreline protection or methods to decrease runoff, the stewardship aspect and teaching citizens. Consider who really is in charge of overseeing the planned developments and construction on a regular basis, you know, as these things are planned and then go forward. Why did some of these things happen? And then after seeing the impact of expansive concrete, of the expansive concrete sidewalks at Arbutus 5, I'm asking you to please reconsider your plan for a concrete pathway at the Gens Park. Is that going to lead to erosion of the soil there and into our precious East Bay? In conclusion, once again, I really do support many of the activities and improvements you have and are bringing to our township, but please stop and do a critical review of the process, the choices, the results, the challenges, and make needed changes as quickly as possible. Then apply what you've learned to future projects. I believe and I hope you believe that stewardship of our parks' lands and water will provide long-lasting, long-lasting recreational outlets. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. All right, moving on from public comment, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for March 18, 2024.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from March 18th as presented.
Motion by LaRose, second by Riordan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Minutes are approved. Correspondences, let me double check. I don't know if there were any of this last, yeah.
Junk emails, but.
Okay. No, I think we just got an update on some GEO cache and that the five-year park plan packets are done, so I think that's everything. All right, reports, treasures part. Garrison, could you please give us an update?
Yeah, March relatively quiet, normal payroll charges, $95 for supplies, 856 for Holiday Woodlands Natural Area, so starting to work on that, I'm thinking plan development there. And then 3,000 for invoice for Arbutus Lake, just finishing up paying for the work that's already done up there, so nothing big to report on.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on the treasures report?
How are we doing on the Tart Trail snowplowing? Did we, it didn't snow? Do we get to roll that money over next year?
We have 5,000 budgeted for this year, but we haven't paid anything yet.
I haven't talked with them about that nor been contacted with that from them yet, so, and I don't even remember the timing. Usually I think we would have paid it by now, so I don't know.
Right.
I don't know. I'll check into that and see. I will say that revenue expenditure report that shows the detail, you can see it's not really showing much detail. As you know, we went to the cloud from a .NET-based software to the same software in the cloud and it was some settings that they needed to adjust for us, so we worked with BSNA over about a week, week and a half. And so next time this report will be run, you will have more detail there. It just was defaulting to that summary AP or the summary payroll, but you'll have more specific information there. And with respect to Arbutus number five, there was a set amount that you, that the Board of Commissioners did approve for that project and we have had two change orders. You've seen both those change orders and the Township Board has seen both those change orders. They were related to, I think the first change order, it was very small, I can't recall what it was related to, it was very small. The second one was a bit larger and that was related to having to redo the full parking lot.
Thank you, Beth. All right, moving on, community garden, Susan or Cory, is there any updates for the community garden?
I don't have any. I haven't met with anyone. I don't know if Sam has anything to report.
We're just waiting to hear from M.D.A.R.D. on the, would be about 100,000 on that grant.
The grant?
So we're waiting to hear on that. And then with respect to the farmer's market, he's setting up that advisory committee meeting and there are, I believe, 19 applicants for vendors, which is great, and one food truck. And we've just been in touch with, or the fire department was in touch with us to make sure we had everything correct for them, which it looks like we do. So he's just moving forward, if you recall, for that portion, we had a $10,000 grant to implement that. And so he's working at getting the signs made up, the tent made up, and so forth.
All right.
I have a question, but I'm trying to figure out how to word it. Wasn't there some sort of Senator, or Stavonow's office?
Yes, they contacted us about congressionally-directed spending for that and we submitted that and that'll probably be some time until we would hear, you know, it's only the second one that we've ever submitted. And the first one took a little bit of time. And then even once we heard that it was approved, we had to wait until, at the federal level, they passed some portion of a budget bill for that year, yeah.
So it might be a little while before we hear anything?
It could be.
Do you know when we'll hear on M.B.R.?
It should be any day.
Okay.
Any week. We kind of thought we would hear by now, definitely expecting by the end of, I wouldn't think it would be past like May 15th at the latest, so you should hear by your next meeting.
All right, thank you. I guess, Beth, do you want to give us a little staff report?
Just that Dan has been busy in the Parks Commission. He did get your bleachers fully completed and actually when they sent the replacement parts for the damaged parts, they sent more than what was needed, so it was kind of nice because we have several of those extra planks, so we're just saving those in case we ever have any damage or anything like that. The Little League did call to let us know they were using the field again and they put the tennis court nets up recently. Dan was just going to get in touch with the main pickleball contact person this week, so we hadn't been in touch with them yet. And let's see.
Are those our nets or their nets?
There are, the pickleball nets, they're our nets.
Oh, okay.
We purchased them, like the rolling mobile nets that they have in the tennis courts, we purchased those for them. So we really do need to look at some shade for that. So if you'll recall, once the courts were resurfaced, they had a tent they used to do and they used to like drill into it to secure the tent and I said, "We can't do that because the water's just going to freeze and it's going to, you know, affect the surface." So we had that repaired when we had some other areas repaired around the tent posts that just naturally had a couple of issues. So they've really been without some shade. We did purchase one to try it. It was like a cabana shade that you hung on the fence.
Oh, wasn't it?
It's just not giving them quite enough, hopefully, we hope that that would work because they were really nice looking and, well, they're a little bit pricey, they're a pretty realistic price, price point. So, but just really not enough shade, like not going deep enough in the shade. So we probably should take a look at some other shade options and bring those back to you to see about placing some shade in there.
Are we just creating a shady spot for the players?
Yeah, it gets pretty hot.
Or are we trying to shade the surface?
No, not the players while they're playing. It's when they're in between play and it gets pretty warm out there in the middle of the day there.
Do you like triangular shades in each corner?
That's what I was thinking, like something, there isn't like a candelivered shade you could get so we could have the posts actually put behind the fence and it would come up and then over. That's when, I think that would be a little pricier. I was hoping to maybe look at some of the sail shades that we could put in the corner there. I'm not sure how they would attach, probably just need to see which, I see the catalogs that have them and online, but I really probably just need to get ahold of a local vendor who does them and have them come out and take a look and get some prices from a couple places.
We need like advertising. This is brought to you by Lowe's.
Another.
What, Lowe's on one side, Home Depot on the other?
Dan was calling as well to have the Porta-John placed from Memorial Day to Labor Day at Pine Grove Park. That was a request we had by some residents out there some, a while ago and we've just continued that every summer since. It's not too awfully expensive.
I didn't know it was only summer. I thought it was placed earlier.
Yeah, well, we, I mean, we have placed them earlier, depends when we get ahold of them and when they're delivering some and when they're picking them up. It also depends on the weather, so, you know, we could place earlier and sometimes we've left them in place longer just because the weather's been so nice. But, I mean, that park is located next to a lot of homes and it's a lot of homeowners, so it's not the worst in the world. They have the option of, you know, trekking home, but it is kind of nice to have an option there for them.
That'd be a nice little park to have a smaller pavilion area.
And then Holiday Woodlands Natural Area, you saw some charges on that for the consulting and you'll recall that that's the project with the seed grant. And that work has been going on, they've had the initial meeting with representative stakeholders from all different areas, went really well. I heard a lot of positive comments from.
Did Sarah go to that one?
She put it on, organized it.
That's the one I went to, right?
I think so, yes. And I heard a lot of positive comments about the meeting and she's just drafted and then Claire and I were going over it and adding comments, the survey on the, that would go out to the public, so. And then as an aside, and that's not Parks Commission, but just to let you know, Planning and Zoning has been working on, they have two grants that are allowing them to do some visioning up on the Beach District, which is US 31 North, really from Avenue B all the way over to Burger King. And they're in the part of the work right now where they are going to be doing some open houses and stakeholder meetings, would love to see you all at them. Those are on our website, if you go to their page. And in particular, there's the Beach District Survey. I think Zach or Garrison was just working on it today. And so, you know, happy to point you in that direction and please have your neighbors know about it and tell them to. We're getting the word out through mass email, through letters. We're also working on some signage to get the signage out on the district with a QR code, too, so. And I heard this weekend, somebody told me it was on the radio last weekend, they were talking about it, too, so.
Does East Bay have any social media platforms for the township specific?
We're pretty limited, very similar to a lot of townships. Social media, it takes a lot to keep it going and there's a lot to it and to keep it current and we don't really have the staff capacity to do that, so we just kind of don't, we use our website more. Now we are just adding one Facebook page for the community garden, I'm sorry, not the community garden.
Farmer's Market.
The Farmer's Market, yes. And the way that we're handling that is, you know, this is really a platform for us to push information out, so we have not, we turn off commenting, so it is not a discussion forum.
That's just like a landing page.
It is, exactly. And people can freely share it to their own page and then make their comments or share it to someone else's and make their comments, that's all up to them. But we're not going to be moderating and looking at all of that, it's too much for staff. And so, yeah, so we're kind of starting with that.
If that works out well, it might be a good idea to set something up, you know, either, you know, if it's just Parks Commission related, or maybe just East Bay in general, with the setup the same way with no comments and all that. So it's just a landing page and then we can, you know, upload whatever flyers. I know Facebook is kind of like not as used as much nowadays by certain demographics, but it's still pretty useful to use, I know. I know it's like the one I know how to use, so.
Yeah, I think they set up Facebook and they were setting up an Instagram page for the Farmer's Market, both. And you're right, and I think that probably in coming months it would be smart, maybe we could talk about templating through the Parks Commission, some social media for parks and, you know, getting that in place and doing it well in the small version here and then expanding that elsewhere.
Okay.
I have two questions. We were waiting on Bash Excavating to do Gens.
Gens, yes. The contract was awarded and once the contract's awarded, Wade Trim goes through and validates, gets all of the paperwork that they need from the contractor, insurance, those types of things. And so they were going through doing that and then scheduling a pre-construction meeting. So they're in the process of doing that.
We don't have any.
So we don't have a date. And if you'll recall, we had already set up with the Conservation District to replace the fences at Pines, I'm sorry, Pine Grove Park and Gens Park. So you may have noticed at Gens Park, some of the pieces are missing and I'm like, "Don't spend any time replacing them" because number one, they don't have that fencing anymore and they have a different style of fencing, so it didn't, wasn't warranted and they're going to be replacing it. So I talked with the engineers, asked them if they had any preference as far as maneuvering around the construction. They didn't care if it was done before or after, so Dan was getting with the Conservation District and they were getting us on the schedule for that. And of course, they do your trail cleanup as well at Killingsworth and at Grace McDonald Park and they were getting that on the schedule.
The Conservation?
Mm-hmm.
Is it open?
The, Gens Park? It is not right now. The bathrooms are still down. We are replacing the toilets in those because the flushing mechanism wasn't very strong, so they're, Dan and Sharon are looking at whether it's something with the plumbing or if it's just simply the toilets were, I think you remember, we had to replace the ones at Grace, they just did not put in the best ones at the time of construction. So they'll be doing, or probably will be putting in new stools at the, at Gens Park, so he's getting that information together. We haven't gotten the proposal on that yet.
Okay. And then, so I have been to number five. When are we repaving it? Do we have a date?
So I don't have the exact date, although I did hear they were pulling up the, I wasn't out there this week or this weekend. Yeah, I heard that they pulled up the parking lot. The contractor, Spence Brothers, is working with Wade Trim and the intention was to pave that, get the grading correct for the handicap accessible, which is part of the reason that they needed to do that and get that paved when, as soon as the asphalt plant reopened.
Okay. There's a ton of construction waste, like off to the side.
Off to the.
Cinder blocks, stuff. Is it safe to assume that they're going to take that out when they finish?
Yeah, there will, the project is not complete and the park is still closed, so, you know, they'll, we'll have a final walkthrough with that. The bathroom is, will, is functional, although it's not open or unlocked right now because we have to walk through, make sure we've got the timers all set correct, the soaps all filled, all that kind of good stuff. So that'll be in the next little bit as well.
Opening the bathrooms?
Yeah, well, it will come probably after the paving.
And the cameras, we have the cameras up?
The cameras are in there and the cameras are working.
Okay, good. Did we ever fix the light?
We have not, I don't think that they have fixed the light shade and that's on my list when we do the walkthrough as well.
When you say the walkthrough, are you talking about our walkthrough?
No.
The final.
To get the certification.
Final walkthrough with the contractor.
Okay. All right. And then I do want to know why, are they planting grass?
There is grass to be planted there. I don't know what the status is on that right now. I thought it was planted.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
But, highlight the construction was done last year, nothing probably took, so.
Wow, you're saying they planted it?
If they did, if they did, it's a final detail of the project.
Because that's going to be, if there's nothing down there, that's going to be a nightmare.
And you, you'll recall with the parking lot, we tried working very hard with the road commission to coordinate them adjusting something from the surface of the road to put maybe some catch basins in the right way there and then they were redoing the culvert there, the road commission is, that's their culvert to do. And they wanted to do that culvert this year, was my understanding, but they've had some staffing turnover there as well, so I think those things were affected by it. And unfortunately, we were waiting so long for, you know, them to collaborate that we just had to move on getting the parking lot done.
It does look like, though, they are working on that side roads, on the side of the road, that whole way all to Hops Highway with the break, you know, with the stones, so.
They're doing ditching, probably.
Yeah.
So really there's no other alternative to, you know, to this runoff other than getting the road commission to, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it was our hope and it's been my hope for quite a while since they've talked about doing East Arbutus Lake Road. Since probably like 2018 when I was talking to them, so five years at least, to get them to coordinate, you know, redoing that area with the parking lot. But, yeah, we're just not there with it. Again, in the right way there, we'd like to see some, you know, they wanted to, they're designing it the best way when we do the parking lot for the best. they're designing it the best way when we do the parking lot for the best for them to do the road, but we can only do so much with only ones being done and not the other. And they're looking at putting, like I said, some, some catch basins perhaps on either side and helping with some of the runoff.
Do you force?
Uh, well, no, that's in the right away with the Road Commission. They will probably ask for some partnership in that, but that, that would be with their roadwork.
Tell them we can partner if they did move it along here.
We've tried a lot of those techniques, but when you have a lot of turnover, it, you know, they're all good people there, but when you have a lot of turnover, it's difficult.
Okay.
And they are doing, you mentioned the ditching project that they're doing. They have been, gosh, I think they started that a year or two ago, if I'm correct. They started, it was under one of the former employees, one of, was real initiative, I believe, on, on his part to reignite kind of the ditching in the county and doing a mass, you know, you know, productive way of going forward and hitting all of the ditches in the county. And then when they were done improving them, they would basically, it's like painting the Mackinac Bridge. Once you're done, you start all over from the, from the beginning. But hopefully, the next time you go around, it's not quite as difficult as the first time.
You don't have to reestablish them.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, can you find out what their plans are for that? Just where the trees are planted, it's just dirt and sand.
I'm sorry, you're talking about at Arbutus?
At Arbutus, yeah, number five. It's still just.
Yeah, absolutely.
Find out what.
We'll have to follow up with them about the grass and.
Because if they're gonna plant grass, we need to put legit fences up because.
Well, I'll, I'll let the, I'll be in touch with the engineers. I'll have them watch this portion of the meeting as well as the public comment, and they'll address those things as engineers and contractors.
Awesome.
Yeah, there's obviously some finishing up touches that need to be done there to get it ready to go and address some of the establishing the grass, so minimize the washout and whatnot, so.
What is the target date for that to open, you know, perfect world, or even not so perfect world?
I would say Memorial Day.
Okay, I was gonna say, I hope they're shooting for Memorial Day.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to business before the Parks Commission, 9A, the Geo Cash project we've been working on. There is an attached document here with some pricing for kind of each cache at each location with the total initial cost up at the top. Beth put together this document, kind of labeling what each park will have, what kind of cache, the logbook, pencils, and then some kind of trackable, you know, first to find thing. And I believe we were, we were putting some stickers, stickers into each one of them as well, so.
I would move to authorize up to $500 to purchase the Geo Cash supplies.
I guess, does anyone have any questions on this or everyone?
I'll second that with discussion. And I'm just curious, I thought I understood what Geo Cash entailed, like when you go to the cache, you take something from it and you replace it with something, right?
Yes.
So.
In theory.
Yeah, so.
It's just like the little libraries.
It's just kinda like stocking up on some stuff for when it runs out, or are these all gonna be?
Yeah, so you'll see the cache, the cache container was picked on the size, basically of like the look and the feel of the park and what would be easily hideable as caches are. And then each one has in a logbook because that's an important part of the Geo Caches, so you can see who stopped by there with some mechanism for writing. And I've chosen the spiral, the logbooks that are all the rain, called Write and Rain, so they're very durable, as well as the pencils that are supposed to be able to write in all, all the different weather or on the material. And then for each of them, I've chosen one Geo Cash coin for first to find. And my understanding is on each of those, particularly the, the two that are $9.99, that they have their own page on the Geo Cash site, so you can like go and see where they go from here to. So, you'd be able to track, hey, this one started in East Bay, where did it go to? So, that's kind of a fun thing. And then on the back, you'll see the inserts. And that's just kind of a smattering of things that we can have on hand and put into the, the Geo Caches so that it's one, not always the exact same thing, and two, we can switch it up a little between caches. And some of these will fit well in the medium size versus the smaller one, although I tried to make it so you could pretty much fit them all in the, in the same ones. But with that, we've got just like a little Geo Cashing tattoo, they're little individual things, you know, the old things you used to put on your hand and whatever, a Geo Cashing bumper sticker. And let's see, the Geo Cashing stickers, those were a really good bang for your buck for like 50 pieces for like six, just a, you know, almost seven bucks. They also had some little silver motivational word charms that people kind of find fun sometimes to take one, stick it in their pocket, or take it and, or share it and drop it at the next cache. And then we're looking at the, probably the largest cost thing is just to have your own personalized stickers made. And we're still gonna look around a little bit on that. I talked with Sam because he, he does a good job on, you know, he's, he's not a graphic designer, but, you know, play around with the stuff and get it in the format. I need it for, for the sticker. And we talked about doing a boot, the side, like of a hiking boot, and putting on the side, like where you might see a label of the boot, your Parks Commission logo in it or something like that. So, he was gonna play around with that, but we can really get it even started prior to those stickers. So, and I know my, my husband was kinda funny because I was working on this like on just my time because it's an interesting project, right? And I was, I said, okay, well, I said, it looks like this is gonna be, and I tallied it up, and he's like, holy moly. That's, he's Geo Cashed with my son before. He was like, that's a lot. You can do one of those in a butter container. And I'm like, okay, true, but here's the thing, these are township Geo Cashes, and you want them labeled, and so we're getting them from the Geo Cash thing that has the labeling on them. And I think you want a certain style or presence for them. And even he was like, well, yeah, that's probably true, but anyway.
It's unique and it's something that we're kinda spearheading. You know, I'll tell you, the county's following closely behind though. We've set up our own Geo Cash kinda setup than the county do, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah, this will be cool.
And I'll, I'll share, you know, the fact that we're doing with, with other fellow supervisors and see if they can get some of their parks involved because I think it's a really cool thing to do even across the county. I mean, people do it definitely across the county, but for municipalities to show off some of their parks and get people into their parks.
It's really pretty affordable programming to get people involved, so. All right, any other discussion? All right, Geo Cash.
Oh, you just have to officially vote.
Yeah, the Geo Cash motion was made by Riordan, supported by Walsh. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, motion passed.
Sorry, Zach, I thought you were going on to the next thing.
No, I got it. Okay, business before the Parks Commission, 9B, the Arbutus Phase Number Two. Phase Number Two was including the, like the playground side of it. So, if you're facing the park down towards the right side where the existing playground stuff is. I guess what people are thinking about should be down there, what we would like to see there.
What we have before, a swing set and a couple of those little bouncy animals?
One thing's for sure, that, that swing set needs to go.
The what?
Metal, metal slide.
Oh, was there a slide? I thought that was taken out a long time ago.
The slide's probably going to have to go based on the, the safety and ounces of it. And I'm not sure if that's official, but just knowing what's down there, I'm pretty darn sure it would fail. The swing set has, I think, three swings in one bay, and you can only have two swings in one bay, so at a minimum, we'd have to take out the minimum, I mean, the middle, the middle one, right? And then you have the little play toys that are kind of nostalgic. We have a couple of those and talked with Dan about several years ago, Susan will remember, we researched somebody to repaint those, and they did a nice job. They don't last very long repainted though. Technically, they, we need to retrofit them if we were to keep them because they are at the eye level for toddler, the handles are. So, we would need to get some other handle inserts and research where those are made and get them. I think maybe you should consider, as nice as they are, and even though they're antique, I think you should consider pulling them and taking, selling them and taking the money and putting it into something newer for the kids. The kids don't really care if it's antique, and a collector may. And then you can get something in that you're sure meets, meets safety specs. And it would, we've never had an incident on any, any of those. That's right. But in, really in taking a look at Phase Two, it's nothing that has to be done right away, but in moving that stuff out, and it is a frequented play area and park where people come to picnic as a family. And so, you do see kids using the swings and so forth. You know, what are you envisioning there? There's not a lot of room for one, and number two, you, you would need to, if you're going to put any even small pieces of equipment there, which you could, there's all kinds of sizes, right? You could do something very small. You could do some independent small pieces. You would really wanna think at, are you looking for that two to five range or the five to 12 range? Because that's pretty much how they break up the playground equipment, and there's reasons for that. It's the size of, the circumference of the head and the trunk size. There are a couple pieces, they tend to be individual pieces, that do span two to five and five to 12, but it's really much fewer and further between. But if you wanted to do that, we could look for a few pieces. But anyway, that's one of the things. And then there is a second part two of Phase Two that's internal, that's in front of the bathroom, and that would be where those older picnic tables are and just updating those and through there, and then having an ADA accessible from there to that bent, that little bridge before the fishing pier.
Connecting the fishing pier, the ADA pathway to the bathrooms. Over the creek?
Connect, yes, yes, connecting the fishing pier to the ADA bathrooms. I mean, they are connected now officially, but it's like going all the way around.
It is nuts.
Yeah.
I couldn't get, I couldn't wheel Ella. I can't take Ella from the path to the wood bridge to go over the creek because it's like.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, they, you can go back towards the parking lot, that goes that way. But you're going, kinda going like around the world to the left to get over to there, you know?
I will say, that side of the park is very swampy, very marshy.
It looks kinda wet.
It's just wet. There's a cement slab from when there was an old boat launch there. So, you've got this, you've got the plow, the plow trail, the cement plow line. And then you've got the swings and the rockers, the spring toys on east? No.
North.
North. And then you've got the metal slide, and kids take their beach towels and then they slide so that they don't roast themselves. And it seems like there's something in front of the slide too.
And if it's, if it, there was something, I don't think it's there maybe anymore. Maybe it came out.
But everything to the north of that cement plow road is pretty wet. Swampy, so.
Is that an area that people try to use?
No.
No?
No.
Put some wetland plants.
I was under the impression that that was gonna get restored, but I think I was incorrect.
Are you, on the north side there, the, we had the invasive species network out. And so, what they told us, number one, which is a nice thing, there are no invasive species in that park. They had no concerns about invasive species there. They loved that the south side was being reestablished. And on the north side, they said that they would like us to just keep going up on that edge of the property line to keep that portion natural, which was planned anyway. They liked the vegetation that was currently there and that sort of thing, so there was just nothing planned for right there.
Wasn't the, right where that Phase Two starts, wasn't there a beach area included in that?
That's in, that's in Phase One.
It's already there.
Because the beach mat is going in.
That's put down already.
Yes.
So, what I can do is if you haven't, what, what we wanted to see is if you had an interest in Phase Two immediately or, or want to hold off on that. And if you're thinking of, you know, looking at adding to that on the shorter timeframe, I can have Wade Trim here at your next meeting and go over some options there with you if you'd like.
I, I mean admittedly, I didn't know there was a Phase Two until today, but Arbutus has been in the works for years, I know, and I'm kinda new. My initial incline is that there's too many issues with Phase One to move on to Phase Two. I feel like there's things we need to address with the current to move forward. If it's a liability and we have to get stuff out of there, then I understand, maybe prioritizing that. And if we have to replace it, I guess I would support like more zero to two and think that older kids can swim and they'll maybe play more in the water and then just have onshore activities for like the real little ones, if, if we had to. But I think, you know, we've heard a lot from our community about Phase One, and I think we should probably address all those concerns before moving forward to anything else.
And we might want to maybe take out the, the metal swings and the metal slides and, and get in the little springy animals and maybe just remove all of that for the summer. So, we know that that safety issue is out of there, danger issue. And then just see how Phase One gets, you know, we don't have to rush right into this. And it would be nice, you know, maybe to have a little bit of play equipment and maybe some nice benches like we have already in Phase One, the tan ones, over there also in a sorta, you know, quiet area too. So, and maybe we just need to just see how, what that area is and just get everything in place and then go and revisit it. I think maybe this year might be a little too much. We might be making hasty decisions.
It wouldn't be for this year. We're looking at a year from now.
We're just looking at ideas, what everyone's thinking we should do for the coming years to do.
I'd like to pull that cement slab out that's under the vegetation and restore. It, I'm not kidding, it's mucky and wet and it's just not fun. Kids only go over there because the swings are there, and even then, I hear them. It's wet, it's mucky, it's gross, and they don't stay for very long. I hate to get rid of play equipment altogether, but from where the wheelchair pad is, the Moby Mat, up, could just be restored and then maybe have some select play, you know, some swings or some sort of whatever new grand play structures.
There is a trend in playgrounds right now. We have one at the district office. They're called nature playsapes or like nature playgrounds. And those might be, structures like that might be something to consider bringing in.
That's what we discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool. Yeah, yeah.
What's it called?
It's like nature playsapes, you know, and so it's just kind of like different types of play structures. It's not your like traditional like swing and, you know, seesaws and everything, huh? Yeah, it's like natural materials and the idea. Yeah, it's like natural materials and the idea is to kind of like, you know, put the kids in like a place where they like feel challenged and scared, but in a safe like play environment. And some of those could maybe fit in really well into a space that we're restoring and.
It's like balance and pro percent.
Stuff like that, yeah. Yeah, like.
Balance, fancy word for balance.
Yes.
Balance in the mud? Great.
Well, maybe we don't want to do balance beams because that comes with a whole other, that's a lot. Yeah, and see, but like some of those structures can be, you know, like you were saying, but like there's different sizes. And I guess that was just an idea that kind of fits in with the theme of like where we're going, I think.
Yeah. I mean, we'll be doing the park walk-through here in a couple weeks, so I guess we can discuss some ideas. I think everyone's kind of on the same path of minimal park equipment. And that restoring, restoring, restoring the north.
Which I thought we were doing.
What do you think about removing all the metal for this summer?
Yeah, and then, no, remove, removing at least the hazardous equipment. You know, the stuff that's not going to probably pass safety, the, the spring animal rides. And then we have to remove at least one swing and I think the slide.
Will they block us opening it if those are in there? Is that what you're thinking?
No, 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 no. That's, there's nobody, there's no playground police. It's just best practice and liability, you know, mitigation.
Playground police.
But I mean, it, it's already there. It's in the ground. So like if we removed it, we can't put it back in the ground.
Those spring things are like grandfathered in. The slide, I mean, and.
It all, it all gets used.
There's so many better things out there right now.
There are.
There's, there's a way that they have you determine whether something has to go or not, right? So they put it on like a, almost like a level, right? If it's impending that someone could get hurt, something like that, then it has to go immediately. If it's probable but unlikely and you can mitigate with, I mean, you know, you've, you've taken the, the test. They have you judge, you know, whether it's what needs to be done first versus what needs to be done second and third, that sort of thing. So we'll, we'll take a look at it. I think I mentioned to Zach that.
Yeah, why? I still have my inspection kit.
Do you? Good. Yeah, because I was going to order one. Dan and I were going to head out into the parks probably in the next week or two and take a look at that stuff, so.
I'm not current certified, though, so I didn't re-up it, so.
Would it be possible to have that, I mean, it sounds like that will fit the timeline, but to have that information available for our parks tour?
Which information?
Like, which playground equipment falls under which category?
Oh, I can probably tell you that right now. It probably, it looks like the slide's coming out. We, a definite swing will come out. And then it's questioned, well, so we'll leave two swings up and leave the bay in place. And then we'll, we'll have to take a look at if we can order the retrofit handles or that's a cheap, easy piece of plastic. And if they're already there, at least it gives families a place to play on with the kids.
It'll also be used more now at the accessibility. Your children don't have to walk through a parking lot to get to the play structure.
Yeah.
And we'll have the sandy area so that line of sight and line of access is probably going to see more use than it's.
I mean, it is a family park, so you want to have things for.
Yeah, I don't think we should rip everything out, but we should.
I remember it is a heavily used park, like we get complaints in the evenings there, correct? And then, I was going to say, because that's why we did away with the rain garden originally, right? Because it's heavily used so much.
Well, eagle.
They recommended we remove it, so.
That's correct.
So that we didn't, you know, you know, explore that option. Same with the, the pavement options out there. It's just, there weren't, you know, a good answer for it, so.
So how are we wrapping it up? Phase Two, we're going to.
I mean, we don't have to, we're just, we don't have to prove anything.
No, you're just, we're trying to get an idea of, you know, where you're at. We'll work through with the engineer in closing out this project. And while there wouldn't be anything we would get, even if you wanted to do a Phase Two, there wouldn't be anything we'd probably get in place this season. It would take a little longer than that, probably not all the way until next year. But we probably would wait until the next construction season, even if you did want to do something. So just wanted to get an idea of where you were at with, you know, completely finishing that, that project.
I'd be interested in knowing if we could do shoreline restoration in the fall.
Well, I, I don't know, let's, you're saying restoration, but I'd like to get.
Michael, we did on the other side.
Yeah, they didn't want us to touch that sign.
Oh, they didn't want us to touch it?
They just want us to leave it how it is. It's already pretty natural and there's no invasive species.
Got it. I got it.
But again, we'll, you know, we'll take a look at it as we're, as their, Wade Trim will take a look at it with Spence Brothers as they're closing it out. And we will as well with the final closeout.
Because that north side was already pretty natural.
It is.
So if there's no invasive species, I'm not sure restoring it, you know?
Kind of work of whatever the, the road construct, or road commission needs to do along the road there. If those, would those changes affect the park at all as far as the water runoff? Like if they divert it to go a different, different way or?
We'd be happy about that because.
Well, I mean, as, as long as it didn't go into a spot we didn't want it to go.
Right, right. And they, and they, the engineers would work to do that.
Okay, so at our parks tour, we should look at that north side Phase Two. Look at the play equipment like we typically would do on a parks tour. Maybe brainstorm some more ideas so we can keep Phase Two what we want. Keep discussing about it, come up with a plan. All right, anything else on Arbutus Two? All right, so moving on to business before the Parks Commission, nine C, the Food Security Advisory Committee. So at the February meeting, we appointed Corey to be the advisor of the committee. The committee will oversee farmers market, community garden and other food security operations since the Township Board and Planning Commission have also done their appointments. I guess at this point in time, we need to confirm the appointment to the Food Security Advisory Committee so that they can get a seat for the 2024 year.
I'm going to confirm Corey Layton as Food Advisory Security Committee rep.
Only if it's spelled correctly.
Yeah.
They always get you.
I'll always support it if it is spelled.
Could, could you add the other two members there as well?
Yeah.
Did it say their names? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's on the back.
Corey Layton, Tracy Bartlett from the Township Board, as well as Rhonda Hassan from the Plant Commission.
I'll second that, or did.
That's fine.
Okay.
Sorry, who first and second?
I motion.
I'll second.
You had three, but we'll, we'll have, go ahead.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passed.
One other thing on that advisory committee, with only three people, three people is, is tough often because if one person can't make it. So Sam and I had talked about, and there are people who are interested in the community garden and the farmers market, you know, residents and, and we thought it would be helpful and a nice opportunity for people who are interested to be engaged to maybe open up two more spots there that are public appointments that you would appoint somebody who is interested in it. If you would look at extending that from three members to five members with two of the members to be, you know, residents of the community or, or something like that, members of the public. I think, I think you would probably want, yeah, however you want to do it, members of the public, whatever. And, and then, while we do have a couple of people who are interested in doing that, we didn't feel comfortable just slotting their names in. We will post that for people to see. And then they can operate with three people for a while, even with five, that's, that's a quorum. So we would post it for a little bit and then bring back to you in a month or two some names of two people who, or more, who are interested in, in doing that.
Yeah, take all the help we can get.
Okay, so we don't.
There's a public meeting, though, where people could still attend and participate.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So while there doesn't really need to be a further motion because we can just post it when we come back to you, you can do a motion to expand it to five and to appoint two additional people at that time. We just wanted to make sure that that was fine with you guys and you saw some merit in it.
I think it'd be beneficial to have some other public attend that, put their input. Like it'd only make the program, program better, so.
All right, we'll proceed with that.
Wait, is there a printed packet? Printed copies of the packet will be in my mailbox. For the Food Security Advisory Meeting.
There's one sitting on my desk. Did anyone else get that or is it Corey?
Oh, I might have, I might have flipped your.
Oh, right, because I switched where I was sitting.
Sorry.
I just thought we all got one, just for fun.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on to business before the Parks Commission, nine D, Grace McDonald, game night. Beth came up with a, an idea that maybe since we didn't do a sledding party this year because of, due to weather, maybe we could look into other programming events. Maybe doing a summer one and maybe a winter one, too, would be a good idea. Have just like a, kind of an open house, have some pickleball, tennis, or we could get some bounce, like bounce house or some kind of, like larger game sets.
We could bring some cornhole boards up to you and kind of promote that project.
We're waiting for a grant, right, on the cornhole?
Yeah.
No, you won't hear on that till December.
Oh.
So, yeah.
So, yeah, I'm sure we can spend a little bit of money and do some kind of fun program, have a summer afternoon game night.
Bring a book and get something, you know, for our library. Bring a book and get some ice creamer, I don't know. A sticker.
Be cool to tie the Geocash stuff into it, too, you know, get people familiar with that.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be much, just be out there, be present.
Hide them.
If you, there's a lot of life-size board games now, if you've noticed. So there's the Connect Four, there's the, what's the other one? There's a Jenga.
Sure, there's Tic Tacto, Chas.
What's that one with ladder and you toss?
Ladderball.
Ladderball. And then we could do just like somebody's regular cornhole to kind of show. And then with that, we could get a banner that goes on those COVID banners to show what we're planning on and just put it up next to the cornhole games, the temporary cornhole games. And we could talk with the Pickleball Association about, about doing a demonstration at certain times, like, you know, every half hour or something, a couple hours out there. We could also check to see if there's a food truck that would come out.
We would like do hot dogs or see if a food truck wanted to come?
Well, if we want the pavilion, we better rent it now.
What night, I mean, if you.
Sometime in August.
Really, I was thinking June.
That was just my idea.
Okay, so these large games, anybody got any? Where would they?
No, we'd have to purchase them, but you could use them again and again for anything that you set up and do. I mean, you could do, you know, a pop-up game night at different parks. If there were, say, for example, if you scheduled it ahead and you had three commissioners who could make it, that would be kind of some neat programming or something like that.
Might be able to encourage, you know, people to bring their own games and then kind of share it across.
Bring your own board.
You know those high school kids that have to do like three volunteer service hours to graduate? That come to our civics, come to our meetings for the civics class, grab them to.
Come.
Good luck.
Volunteer.
And there's a lot of different things that you could do. There's, you could do a movie night on the beach at Jen's to promote the usage of that park because it's, you know, not, not super well-known. It's a little gem there and.
A little trickier than you would think.
Is it? You've done it with the?
We're going through the hoops of doing some stuff like that.
Okay.
There's licensing and stuff like that. There are free movies out there, but probably not anything anybody wants to watch.
Not anything. Well, we'll let you handle that and this game, the game thing is easy peasy, so.
I mean, we don't, maybe get one or two kind of backyard life-size games. But, I mean, we do have a lot of different things at the park already. Get some basketballs or tennis, pickleball, have the pickleballs, pickle, yeah, kickball.
Would you have a, okay, so were you thinking a yes on this?
I think we need to do something.
Yeah, since we canceled the party, I feel like we should.
Let's, April.
Do something.
We have to promote it.
And yeah, it's a good chance.
The letters are, the letters are tax. When's the next tax newsletter?
It would go out, is it June, June, June first, I think? It's in June, July, or May, do they go out? No, it's my due date, June first, and they go out July first. I forget right now, but it's about that timeframe, so August would hit.
That works because it might be fresh in the brains.
I was thinking early to mid-August, kind of wind down of the summer. Give us some time to plan and be prepared.
You're thinking a weeknight?
I think a weeknight would be a good idea.
Weeknights would be easier for myself personally.
I think a lot of people have busy summer weekends, so yeah, a weeknight would be, yeah.
With the later, later hours, you know, daylight, easily pull it off on a weeknight.
Maybe a Wednesday or a Thursday evening?
Yeah, that'd probably work best for me.
Bring some sidewalk chalk. That'd be a big hit.
Have a sidewalk.
Our content.
That's a good idea.
Cute.
Yeah. Well, we'll bring you back.
I think we have a slingshot thing.
Budget.
From the civic center.
BP gun. Dunking tank. Dunking tank.
You know, Susan, your ideas are causing our insurance agent.
Well, she said sidewalk chalk. Dunk your commissioner.
I just don't have it mid-August. I have a commitment.
I think, yeah, goal would be early August, I think would.
We can do a Google survey where you can put in your availability so we can try to find the best day for all the, the most number of commissioners.
Good way to do that.
August, I'm out.
End of, end of July.
Like the 21st, I'm available.
Okay, well, we'll come up with something. Hopefully everyone can make it. If not, have to do another one. All right.
Can you slide down that hill on cardboard in the summertime?
Sure.
Depends how big of a running start you get.
Did you not just say?
Maybe it's-
Well, we also do have our own ambulance service here at East Bay.
They're just one block away.
Well, yeah, we can invite them.
Susan just wants to, Susan just wants to use her sled.
Instead of Parks and Rec stickers, we're gonna get some Parks and Rec banners.
They could take and build their boxes, so there could be a competition with one that not only functions well, but also looks great. Okay. Bring the books.
All right, if there's no more on, um, the game night, let's move on to business before the Parks Commission, nine E, the Parks rules. They're in your packet as well. Let's just kinda checkmark what rules are in place at each park.
Yeah, I compared it with the, um, the quiet area and, uh, we're spot on.
Um, Holiday Woodlands isn't on here.
It's not technically a park either.
We, we don't have any of the, of the specific
Like not yet.
Rules for them, yeah.
No trailer boats at Arbutus, what exactly does that mean? Cause that's like the only all sp- all sport lake, so I was wondering why that was the only one that had that rule.
There's just, there's no
There's no room.
There's no-
You were saying in the parking lot, no trailers?
Uh, no, 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 no trailer boats, like you can't trailer and put in a boat through, that's not a boat access.
Right.
Neither's, neither's Jen's.
I mean, I think it used to be a long time ago, which is why that concrete pad is there, but, no. And there is other public spots to put in on that, on that park, right, Zach?
On Arbutus Four, there's a state campground and state launch, so.
And then Jen's Park is the only one where you don't allow pets, but we do have like doggy bags and stuff down there.
We do have doggy bags there, so one of the things I wanted to mention to you, I had heard that, um, the no pet allowed there, um, was due to the DNR trust fund, um, which that property was purchased and improved through the DNR trust fund. And I've worked quite a bit with the DNR trust fund and know that that didn't seem accurate, um, and then had heard that Eagle required that as well. I've inquired of both the DNR trust fund and of Eagle and that is absolutely not a requirement of theirs. They, um, have no issues with that and do not, um-
Do we have any signage? I don't think I've seen signage.
There, I think it might be on the main part of the sign. We do have people who bring their pets there and I think because that, that's where the, the, the dog, you know, bags came from. You know, I, I think there are a lot of people who, apparently Americans spend more on their pets than they do their infants. There's like more spent on pets than, which is amazing. So I don't know if that's something that you want to continue to have there or we just address it, um-
I think it was also too, Beth, of, of the birds, the birds that were there along that shoreline and that, I think. That's was always my assumption, why we didn't allow dogs at Jen's Park.
Yeah, but you, but Susan, you've got them every place else.
I think the bigger issue would be people letting them, letting their dogs off the leash.
Cause it's such a small park. It's such a small area there.
And the neighbors are like private property, like it's hotels, it's guests, I can see why they would have created the rule.
Well, we didn't have it on the other side at one point, there was just a private residential home there until the hotel. Uh, again, I think my only assumption was because there used to be red-winged blackbirds and all those kinds of natural birds along at Jen's Park. And yeah, they probably are also, but they weren't really a, a concern, cause I, I don't know, I mean, that's why I think, and I never heard of Eagle or, you know, the DNR requiring no dogs on that park.
Yep, that's, that's what I had understood. But that's not, that's not in fact the case, so I just wanted to let you know that.
If it's not required, I'd propose removing that, just so it's in line with all the rest of the parks.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why a dog couldn't be on the, the beach, but definitely need to have a leash policy.
Are we gonna just continue to not enforce it?
I mean, how about down the
You don't have to have a leash policy or anything, it's against the law.
Well, yeah, you get, I guess enforcement of-
I mean, we could say, you know, all pets must be leashed, um, make that a rule, um, but I mean-
I thought that was a state law for all like municipal, um, yeah, yeah.
It is, it is a state law.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if it's, it's a six-foot leash or, I don't, I don't know if that's the case or not, but I know it has, you know, your pet has to be leashed. Cause I might deal with that a lot. And dogs just wanna have fun.
Any other proposed changes?
What should we put, no trailer boats at Jen's?
I mean, like, yeah.
Someone would have to be pretty silly to try.
There's no way to even get a boat to-
There's no way.
You couldn't even. I mean, maybe-
If there's a will, there's-
You can pull in and then back it out and put your boat back on that.
Well, once we put the white pathway in, somebody will be like, oh, I'm gonna try it.
You, you could take a look at that one when the park is done and you're out there and see what it looks like there as well.
I mean, we could also just put it on there
I mean, it's not-
Just in case someone's like looking at the rules online and they've never visited the park before, maybe gives them a little bit of like a guidance of what type of space it is.
I mean, it's not just referring to boat, I mean, you gotta take in account no trailer parking in general. I mean, just cause they're lakefront and we're referring to boats, but there's no launch access. But you don't want some necessarily bringing a trailer to Grace either, cause it'd take up-
And they're pretty much at all our parks, it's like dusk to dawn. I mean, they have to be out by dark, correct?
Dawn to dusk, except for Grace, when they, um, sled, the, the lights are on because it gets so dark so early.
Yeah, and you know, well, I was just wondering, cause I think on the quiet area, like, there could be no one there from 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM, which I thought, whoa, that's, that's being there quite, you know, till 1:30 in the morning, 2:00.
Well, yeah, that was me complaining, cause go stargazing, it's like a great place to-
So I know that that was in their rules from 2:00 to 5:00. No
I mean, you know, people-
No occupancy.
Yeah, people wanna view the stars and stuff, I'm sure that's why the quiet areas have that timeframe. No.
Can we talk about the verbiage at the hunting and firearms at one point, too, in the park rules? Trying to remember what that conversation was.
I know there was something about drones and I really liked that, use of drones without a township permit. Have you issued any permits for a drone? Just curious.
I don't even know if there's a permit process, I mean, I think these rules have been in place a long time.
Yes, Steve Largent started that, drone, um, issue at the quiet area. And I see that they and there's also have, you have to have a permit through the county, so, which is kinda nice, I don't know if any of you have been around drones, I know they make, they're beautiful, but, um, I, I live on a lake that we have loons and we didn't have any babies last year, so I think some of that's because of the drones.
Hunting and firearms.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what that was, is it, somebody wanted us maybe to change it from firearms
I think they wanted to hunt the geese on Arbutus.
Why?
Seriously.
I think Bob wanted us to hunt the geese on Arbutus. He was so tired of picking-
Although, when I was over there a couple of weeks ago, I did see some geese, so hope it works.
I was hoping it would kinda break their habit, cause the geese poop is an issue that parkgoers don't really enjoy.
I don't know that anyone enjoys it.
Nature. Yeah, the geese do. The geese enjoy it.
So are we removing pets not allowed at Jen's, just taking that off of there?
I would move for that, yes.
Yeah. I don't see any other things we need to really change.
Thank you, second.
I'll touch on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion
Sorry.
Motion by Reardon, support by Walsh, to move forward with the Parks rules with the chains of, change of removing the pets at Jen's to allowing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to business before the Parks, oh, excuse, we're done with business before the Parks Commission, uh, moving on to public comment. Do you guys like?
Good evening, Judy, I'm a East Bay township resident and thanks for all the lively discussion tonight. A couple of questions. I, I really am concerned about the wetland, uh, where the playground area is over at the park and I'm, I'm hoping that you do take a real close look at that and, uh, bring your, um, wellies with you.
Our what?
Your wellies.
Oh, okay.
It's probably a Brit term, but whatever. Anyway, I am concerned about the spring rains, you guys, there's, we had some pretty heavy rains and those are gonna continue and I really think you need to deal with that erosion out there at this point in some fashion, so I'm hoping you can address that with Wade Trimm or, or who's ever working that, because, um, it's, it's creating, the sandy loam out there is just, is just eroding, uh, into the lake and into the creek. The second thing I need you to look at is, yeah, the road commission, I'm hoping that they will work with you because that, those two hills come down like that and it does create a waterfall, but not only that, but what about the grit in the so, in the salt from the, from the roads? Cause they salt, they salt our, East Arbutus, uh, Lake Road, um, used to live on that road. I remember when it was a boat launch, so, um, not saying I'm that old, but I do, um, and-
I remember when it was a boat launch.
Yeah, I know, I know you do, Sue. So, yeah, please, please look at that, there's gotta be some way, and ditches aren't gonna do it, because eventually that's gonna leach through that sandy loam into that, into Five, and Five is a great, was a great fishing lake, I haven't fished it for a long time, but, um, you don't wanna, you don't wanna damage the fishery. The other thing is, if you're gonna create a beach, um, do you have to have water testing? Like they do, um, you know, for E. coli, et cetera, so that's something to think about if you do have a beach area. And I noticed that the safety ring is laying on a post on the bench, probably because they're working on construction, but the safety ring, um, you know, what's the liability there, so, um, and the other thing is, someone will bring kayaks in, they will bring kayaks in and they will launch them from that beach and there might not be invasives now, but with that, there will be. It's just a matter of, of time. So, um, I'd appreciate you also maybe considering some native plantings as opposed to all the turf grass. I know they did that where the koi logs are and that looks really nice and, um, those seem to be coming in. Koi logs, those are the, the ones to, uh, to the, oh my gosh, that, we have north to the nor, by the, by-
It's on the south side of the property.
Yeah, by the south side, where
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Those are koi logs and they put plants in there and those are really nice.
Yeah, that's what I thought was gonna happen.
That helps with the erosion.
The whole length, but I
On the north side.
I misunderstood, yeah. And that's what I'm talking about, when I'm talking about my interpretation of restoration, just doing to the north side what we did to the south side.
South side wasn't natural, it was grass all the way up to the shoreline though, I believe.
There's no wall on the south side.
It was a combination of, well, you could see where people walked up and fish.
There's lots to choose from with natural plantings too, grass isn't the answer, especially along that, so close to the water.
And, and please be cognizant of the, the creek or the overflow from spider, that, that's really a concern, so, um, please, uh, look at those things and I hope it's a nice day like today when you get out there. Thank you very much.
It's gonna snow.
Thank you.
Better not snow?
I just put it out there, it's gonna snow.
Hi, Carol Kussel, thank you so much for your discussion tonight and, um, so many good ideas. Two other things to consider is, um, one is in regards to the dogs at, at Jen's Park. I believe Jen's Park is the only place in the township on the bay, the only township park on the bay. And you've already mentioned that it's not very big and I'm sure you're aware that there are people who, and children, who are fearful of dogs, I mean, really fearful and allergies and then there's, do they really stay on the leash and will they really pick up the, the dew, the dog dew? So if it becomes, you've already passed your, your, you know, that it will be open to dogs, but if it becomes problematic, um, perhaps something you consider, you could consider is that one or two days of the week could be considered, um, or designated as a, as a dog day, so that those who do not want to mix with dogs can have the, the majority of the days. And another thing, another suggestion is, um, in, when you think, when you go to Arbutus Five Park and think about the playground there, think that, please consider thinking that, um, a playground doesn't only have to be for young children, it can be for people of all ages and all abilities. And, um, I've mentioned this before and wanna mention again that, uh, a number of our parks in the area, especially in, or one example is the, um, East Bay Park in, um, Acme, has a bench swing where, um, two or three people can sit on it and that can be sat on and used by any ages. I know you already said that, um, grants aren't avail, or, aren't available or difficult to, um, to get for playground equipment, but that kind of thing, a bench swing or that kind of apparatus where a bench swing could hang, could also, um, there's also ones made available for wheelchairs or, um, or, um, even people with walkers could, could access that. So please consider that, um, play equipment is, is for all ages, we're all kids at heart, or perhaps we should be. Thanks for your work.
Thank you, Carol.
Carol and Judy, I'm wondering, would it be possible for you to email us, like your bullet points for Arbutus Five, that we could pass on to the engineers? I just wanna make sure we didn't miss anything, I know you had a lot of good observations.
All right. Moving on, um, to upcoming meeting dates, uh, May 15th, uh, was our Parks visit and May 20th would be our regular meeting. Can't remember the time, was it 5:00 PM? We, uh-
I think we said 5:30?
I think we did say 5:30, I put it in my calendar.
Said 5:30.
Yeah.
And where are we starting? At Jen's? No.
We said Pine Grove.
Oh.
Yeah, typically we would meet at Pine, Pine Grove.
So we start at Pine Grove, May 15th.
Oh, yeah, then we went to Jen's and then
Yeah.
Ouch.
Our minutes are, minutes say that we would determine the itinerary for the Parks Board today.
Yeah, that's fine.
So Pine Grove, then Jen's.
Jen's.
Then going to where?
Are we hitting up all of them?
Well, there's all of them.
I know, that would be a lot.
We need to at least hit, um, Killingsworth, Grace McDonald, Arbutus Five.
Since we don't know when the paving will be done and complete, do you want to schedule a separate Arbutus, um, visit after the, the contractor's done there or the paving's done?
Yeah, depending on that schedule, um, I guess we can plan on going there, but if it's not done, not accessible, we will have to reschedule.
Okay, that sounds good.
And if it can't be rescheduled, I guess each one of us individually can go down there, take some notes and bring it to a meeting as well, but it definitely would be beneficial for us all to be there and discuss at one time. Yeah. I mean, worst case scenario, but.
Shall we, is it, um,
Pines Water Tower?
Pines, oh, I think we've done-
We did Water Tower. We did Water Tower, we did Water Tower last year.
Unless we're gonna like move forward with something with that, I think we could skip it, but-
Maybe it'd be beneficial to hit Pines.
Yeah, because, I mean, they just, the Turtle Cove there connects right up to it and that was just recently, um, put into a conservancy, so it might be worth looking at the trail system there, you know, so we could do, because I don't know if there's really an established parking lot there, is there?
No, it's like a circle.
Just a little circle, yeah.
Well, there's a, oh, yeah.
There is a-
A five-year-old on the-
There's a circle.
Yeah, there's a-
Midpoint.
Yeah, there's a roundabout or whatever, not a roundabout, but a cul-de-sac.
And I don't know if that would be something, you know, we would want to try to-
We could head it, we could head it after Jen's, go south and then come, come back at, um, Kill, or, um-
We could do that last.
You could do, yeah, that would make more sense, probably.
And then if, if Arbutus isn't done, we'll just end at the Pines, which is just up the road here, um, and if it, if Arbutus is there, we could do Pines and then Arbutus and then split off, be done, last one at Arbutus.
Yeah. So Pine, Jen's, Killingsworth.
Wait.
Pine Grove.
Yeah.
Pine Grove.
Yes, yes.
Pine, Pine Grove.
Pine Grove.
Pine Grove, Jen's, Killingsworth, Grace, um-
Pines and Arbutus Five.
Well, why would we do that? Why would we go to Pines to come back to Arbutus Five?
Oh, we'd have to head up Arbutus Five for-
We could do Grace, Arbutus and Pines. If, if Arbutus isn't done, then we'll just do Grace and Pines. Or we could move Pines before Grace and Killingsworth, we'd just go, come from Jen's to Pines, then we could go do Arbut, or, um, Grace McDonald.
I prioritize Pines a little bit just because there's nothing really there to-
Not yet.
I was just there a few weeks ago, trails. It did look like at one point, I was walking, and now I'm in people's backyards, but it looked like if I kept going to my left, I don't know direction, I would have ran into Turtle Cove. I would like to explore if we could make a proper connect, but where do you park?
Um, yeah, it's undeveloped, so there's, I said it's undeveloped now, so there's really-
Trucks.
Yeah, there's really no, no parking other than on the side of the county road, which-
When is, um, the, um, Board of Trustees meeting in May?
That'd be the-
Thirteenth?
We're going in? We're just going quarterly, we're not going every month. Yeah, but when's the next quarterly? Wasn't it April?
Which is last.
We were just there. We were there last week. Yeah, how'd that go?
I, I was just wondering if someone was going to go to that meeting, just for a presence rather than quarter, quarterly.
July 8th would be the next quarterly.
Oh, sorry, eighth, okay. Well, I think I'm signed up for that.
Gave them a, went over the five main things there, it kind of summarized, didn't really have any questions.
All right.
All right. I guess if there's no more discussion, um, about the Parks visits, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting at, uh, it's like 7:34 PM.